... He was always the team, Lord. To further Lord's work with the community of our town and our nation. God save you.
Thank you.
Thank you gentlemen. The other comment will be accepted before we begin to adjourn the island with a three minutes from July twenty-three, two thousand twenty-five at thirteen. A group of events from July seventh, two thousand twenty-five go to keep. Is that an answer? Second by Mike. Any questions? Audience one, audience twice, audience three times. We'll go on majority. Aye. Nancy.
Aye.
Mike.
Aye.
Yeah.
Aye.
Don.
Aye.
Sheriff, we're plugging here. Considered, contacted to certain ordinance men in G M O five quarters that related to insurance, insurance, or insurance, or even verified that did not contribute upon Medicare to the disability or disability or non-aided related factor. Why is he giving the explanation that's meaning to the motion for the public here? Is that a comment? We, like, say there are any motion for the public here? No, we didn't. We get out. So is there any comments, any questions for the council? Any questions from the audience? Or whatnot? In time? In time? Okay. We're going to get out of the public here. Oh. By Mike, second by Jeff. We'll go on majority. Aye. Nancy.
Aye.
Mike.
Aye.
Jeff.
Aye.
Don.
Aye.
Who, something considered ordinance men in G M O fifty-seven related to insurance or certain guardians, or even verified that did not contribute upon Medicare to the basic disability disability or non-aided related factor. You have a motion? Who?
I'll say.
Who, by Mike, second by Nancy.
Uh, any on the audience? One? Lots? Two times? No questions? We're going to vote.
Aye.
Nancy.
Aye.
Mike.
Aye.
Jeff.
Aye.
Don.
Aye.
The Conocul's had a seventy-five non-virtuous celebration event. It's, it's in progress. It's, everything's going well. We'll move back to date, the highlights and final decisions and quickly, council. Close to bed and look a lot more with the courtesy.
Correct.
There is a go in the middle tomorrow. They have a six-ten go there. So, but any questions? Do I answer? Uh, the question they can.
Is it just for the town people? The city, more than that, I just have to answer.
Yeah, everything's very large. It'd be hard to say who came. I don't want to be in the, I don't want to be in that conference room there. Yeah, it's everybody. Matt.
I saw there's a flowers.
Yeah, there's a flowers in the back. Good question. It's been acting many times. Did you go back, go one north by your driveway, there's no chair behind. The house, uh, you send the, the items to this or? Who would die? And then moving the other way. Say you are coming to have the goods, so, 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 many? Any questions? Audience one, audience twice, audience three times? Not a vote majority?
Aye.
Nancy.
Aye.
Mike.
Aye.
Jeff.
Aye.
Don.
Aye.
All right. Jeff, uh, come into the meeting, the southern, time, sit down.
Yes, sir. Uh, first item is B C, uh, ten-seven-four. This property is condemned on June sixteen, two thousand twenty-five. Credit condemnation order was issued and our C P O has updated this property.
Uh, this is a follow-up inspection. There are no changes to the previous inspections. So it's our recommendation to proceed with the condemnation.
Okay, the owner's here. Do you have any comments on it?
Uh, yeah, I do have an update on it. I did have somebody who looked at the roof, their eyes on the roof, getting everything material, getting everything ready to do it. Uh, so the roof, through the side. Yeah, side pieces to match. Like color match, I've, you know, figured out, I've not, fourteen type thing. Also today, which was a long day off, I did go clean up everything outside and when he, uh, cut any siding that was hanging, tried to make it a little bit more secure than what it was meant. I wanted to be, but.
I would say that like you keep the, the lobby, keep it ready, bros.
All right, thank you, Ryan. We, we were the constitution, we were the procedures, though. And we, we think of the procedures anyhow, Ryan, because it's, we get there a lot of it. It's, um, does it pan out, I mean, so it gets ordered and agreed to. I mean. I'd like to make a motion, but you can do the procedure and give priority.
There's a motion by Jordan. Second by Jeff. Don, Nancy. Any audience wants? Audience twice, audience two times? Are we going majority? Aye.
Nancy.
Aye.
Mike.
Aye.
Jeff.
Aye.
Don. Don.
You can do, you can do a lot of third team.
If you like the question, the board, sorry. We had that last meeting, exactly what's the board, you don't have to get there all the way.
It's all good. Yeah, pretty good.
Thank you, Jordan.
Thank you.
Okay, Don.
This property is T, uh, B C ten-eight, since property was condemned on June second, two thousand twenty-five, credit condemnation order was issued and our C P O has updated this.
This was a follow-up inspection. More progress has been made to clean the site. Addition continuing to all previously noted items for address.
I'm hoping to give priority.
Does the motion made by, uh, Mike, second by Nancy, give priority?
I, yeah. There, there.
Doesn't anyone know there's a pile of trash, or else, I don't know if that's when you trash this or not, it just, you know, I guess that's, I don't know if it's keep a little or whatever. Just kind of, let's see, right, or else they say it's the, you gotta come and see.
See, I'm gonna try to, try to get. I think you ought to.
Okay, it's not, you can't pick it up, it's not, just, pop on, and I can get there.
Did you pick it up, that's okay.
Any other questions in the audience? One time, two times, three times? All right, we're going majority.
Aye.
Nancy.
Aye.
Mike.
Aye.
Jeff.
Aye.
Don.
Aye.
All right, Don.
B C ten-fifty-four, uh, this property has been condemned, credit condemnation order was issued, uh, that's updated property, this is taken and our C P O has.
This was a follow-up inspection. More progress was made to clean the site. Addition continuing to the site is clean and the structure is weather tight.
Yeah, uh, did a little more with the Brooklyn, but for the C plus, we need to see some, uh, they play a little more, a little back there, people strapped. I got a track that come in this week, actually, to help push everything together. So, no more out. Now, on the highway, it's time for us to put that up there again, it won't bring it back up. Uh, rattling is time, I'll run here, it's time, tell them, start us, we can do it, we can do it.
Kind of figured out where it's on. Thank you.
But they are good, and it's a terrible one. It's street away, they're gonna face out there as well.
Right.
And it was called, it must be started. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
I'm thinking with priority.
What you mean by Mike, give priority, second by Nancy? Any questions in the audience? One time, two times, three times? All right, we're going majority. Aye. Nancy.
Aye.
Mike.
Aye.
Jeff.
Aye.
Don.
B C ten-six, uh, this property has been condemned, credit condemnation order was issued, uh, updated inspection to this date and our C P O has.
This was a follow-up inspection. No noticeable changes out of means of the previous inspection, but the progress should continue until the structure is weather tight.
All right. Don, give priority.
I did, I did notice they were working the door, if you did, we'll give it up. I'm hoping to give priority.
What you mean by Jordan, give priority? Second by Tom. Any questions in the audience? One time, two times, three times? All right, we're going majority.
Aye.
Nancy.
Aye.
Mike.
Aye.
Jeff.
Aye.
Don.
Aye.
And just for the record, certain days, that's the second meeting in August, correct? It's the day, well, this is, I think.
Thank you.
Uh, B C ten-twenty-seven, this property was condemned on June sixteen, two thousand twenty-five. Credit condemnation order was issued, uh, uh, a, updated due today and our C P O has.
This was a follow-up inspection. More progress has been made since previous inspection. Addition continuing to the structure is weather tight. Workers, work process in terms of the inspection.
Uh, thank you. Before you call, then, uh, I don't know, reveal, it's pretty common, you, you act about that, it's very big.
Okay.
Well, by Jordan.
Say it.
Second by Mike. Any more questions in the audience? One time, two times, three times? Go on. Jordan.
Aye.
Nancy.
Aye.
Mike.
Aye.
Jeff.
Aye.
Don.
Aye.
All right.
This property is, uh, B C ten-sixty-three. Uh, this property was condemned, this is restored property. The owner had to quarter the last meeting that, uh, and others that the, the store had agreed to build a small little house that could not require, uh, permission in seven acts, uh, that would require some verification of door access. Um. The council gave, so, August sixth, two thousand twenty-five, uh, for the owner and the store to make demolition progress on the shop that was being done. Our C P O does have updated ones.
This was a follow-up inspection. There has been no change since previous inspection. So it's our recommendation to proceed with condemnation.
All right, any questions?
Question? I, I have a, of the, the Chris contacted me today, he said, well, he said, we are ready to mobilize as soon as we see those permits come through, did they permit company? As far as, I need all the demo and affiliate permit, as soon as they get that up.
I know they've started the permit application process, I'm not really, they've actually applied for it. They should have, they were, they were looking at it, they were searching two hours vacation, so you gotta check again. Considering you did that, they're saying Friday, so we should be able to get that this week. I should be able to get it.
The husband may have had some worry, was she just waiting on a check for the permits?
That was a week ago, or better.
I don't think it's better, but it was a week ago. So, yes, you're right. So we gotta find that check before then. I'll check it over, and I'll check if you want.
So.
Uh, B C ten-seven, uh, the property was condemned on June second, two thousand twenty-five. The owner had until July second to repair the polish, uh, structure, uh, July seventh meeting, council request of this guy to relax the bits, request for this were set out under two, uh, to the end of August fourth, two thousand twenty-five, as necessary in the property. Uh, B C ten-eight, this property was condemned on June second. The owner had until July two to repair the polish, uh, uh, property. At the last house meeting, the owner was here today, there's also work in progress with the next update, uh, if you want to get the polish for it. No action necessary. B C ten-seventy-eight, this property was condemned on June sixteen, two thousand twenty-five. Credit condemnation order was issued, you have a attorney and the council president that both were here to issue to the current, uh, construction. Uh, personal service will be made by, uh, the ownership department. In hearing for that, uh, person that custody of the property, unless this scheduled August fourth, uh, I'm not, I'm actually, yes, sir. Uh, B C ten-eight, for this property, we establish for condemnation here on August fourth. That's a proper service that will be made on the owner to get personal service by, uh, the ownership department. Uh, B C ten-eight-five, uh, until July seventh, two thousand twenty-five, we have to turn to the Push Power Services Office, made that for a personal ownership, the property issued, reported owner, Mr. James Sands, I don't know if Mr. Sands is here. Uh, uh, as of today, as not verbatim documentation, uh, relative to his ownership, I will also say this afternoon, or this morning, I first would check for the Push Power Services. I can find nothing that shows any ownership interest of Mr. Sands. In furtherance of that, I also request our abstract, the ones that we use, they'll check to see if she has, could find anything, two forty this afternoon. There's nothing that she can find in the right, in the complete package for the court that shows his ownership interest. He does own a property immediately, if like the next parcel up north of it, Jackson.
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 Jackson. But, uh, Jackson four, so, but, unless I did pop, but we just can't find anything in the right.
I think it was under O's trucking.
O's trucking? Could be just, uh, I'll talk to you now. They had another, there was another, it could be the same owner that owned the property, O's trucking, O's. Uh, or if it's one of them. Okay, so we'll, we'll shut it on now and see what the property will report. Um, so, uh, there's no action necessary. O's, uh. B C ten-eight, this property was condemned on June second, two thousand twenty-five. The owner has until July two to repair the polish for credit condemnation order in the last council meeting, the owner was given the credit days, uh, extension, there's work in progress. And that's updated, that, ours will be all support, two thousand twenty-five, as necessary. Uh, B C ten-seventy-eight, this property was condemned on June sixteen, credit condemnation order was issued, you have a attorney, so the council, so, so, here.
This one's eighty-seven.
Yeah. Any, any, the seven? Quick, quick, quick. We went, not, all right. Where should you?
Eighty-six.
Eighty-six. Eighty-six. Eighty-six. Six. Yeah.
See, you're talking, see, there's, there's, we're getting seventy-five, if you're trying to be fair.
That's, we're at eighty-five.
Eighty-three.
They didn't talk about that, they were coming.
Who, you had, Tom?
No, I don't. We're at eighty-six. Uh, this property was condemned on July seventh, credit condemnation order was issued and next update will be August seventh, two thousand twenty-five, will be, there are no action necessary. Uh, B C ten-eight-seven, this property was condemned on July seventh, two thousand twenty-five. Credit condemnation order was issued, next update will be August seventh, will be, there are no actions necessary. Uh, B C ten-eight-eight, this property was condemned on July seventh, credit condemnation order was issued, next day, update will be on August seventh, will be, there are no actions necessary. Uh, B C ten-nine, uh, this property is condemned in credit condemnation order was issued as to Philip, Laffer, Palace, Laffer, and Kathy perform on July seventh. No words issued as to Mr. Lawrence and Laffer, who we understand now is deceased. Information given by the family of the deceased shows that attorney has been engaged to represent the state of the deceased in the succession of murder. The property issued is supposedly sold by August seventh, two thousand twenty-five. Uh, next update is yet, uh, at, I'll also note, just, our purposes here, you know, check the succession records and, uh, just, uh, and there's been no, no succession opened on behalf of the deceased. Uh, so, just have to give.
Mr. Don, just the nature. So, you have a later, later.
Uh, they are, uh, that part, it's, I think, uh. Let, here we go, ten-nine-one, we, uh, this property is scheduled for condemnation here on August eighteen. So, there's, uh, no action necessary. Uh, ten-nine-two, this property is scheduled for condemnation here on August eighteen. Uh, and ten-nine-three, uh, this property is scheduled for a condemnation here on August eighteen, with, uh, off-merit. And, uh, no action is served, last person. That's, uh, all right, please, don't worry.
All right, Tom, thank you very much, I believe you staff is on board. Any questions, or this is Tom, the board, J A P. My attorney, uh, insurance, good. I'll tell you what we say.
Thank you.
Billy, come in. Tom. How they doing? Uh, we have any comments? You gotta add, yeah, I'm thinking, yeah. I'm sorry, I'm like, uh, need to add a person, I'm really, it's definitely, uh.
I'm moving.
Say it. Second by Mike. Uh, the agenda, audience? One time, two times, three times? All right, we're going majority.
Aye.
Aye.
Mike.
Aye.
Jeff.
Aye.
Don.
Aye.
All right.
The board adjustment, it's, uh, had a meeting, twenty-one oh eight, eight, five, five, drive it. Or, no, there is to place the whole home. Rear yard there, so twenty-three to eight feet, black one, you have?
Yes, sir, the board, we had this afternoon, uh, the basehead mobile home in Artozal, with the rear yard there, twenty foot to eight foot, but few flowers. Twenty-one oh eight, five, five, drive, and the board is special, and, but, we got moved to there.
All right. You, 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 you. All right, Rick. I'm moving, except, uh, and, who, by Jordan? I'll say that. Second by Jeff. Any questions in the audience? One time, two times? Three times? Go on. Jordan.
Aye.
And?
Aye.
Mike.
Aye.
Jeff.
Aye.
Don.
Aye.
All right. Uh, projects out of the board, number one?
Is, we're phase seven, uh, the projects are complete, they, in fact, we all, we all threw footprints up around the station, so we listen, something to disallow the mayor's on his paper. It's possible.
Motion, Jeff?
Next, we're voting.
I'll say it.
Motion made by Nancy, second by Jeff. Any questions in the audience? One time, two times, three times? We're going majority.
Aye.
Nancy.
Aye.
Mike.
Aye.
Don.
Aye.
All right.
The, uh, foundation project, C wall, elevation authority, has still been our, uh, applications to do back in February, uh, they haven't told us to know yet. Can you check, hey, help us everyone? The F M A grant, we're basically finished with the engineering work on that. We have gotten the specs and design report ready to go. The plan, this should be tomorrow. Uh, we'll get that package to you.
The, 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 the design.
That was my intention. We're still, still going through that last check before the, 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 the. Uh, state, what, uh, need state, the bottom loan, the sewer phase eight project, the charge has begun, they've got the section from terror log to across Sherbrooke, uh, they per that manual, they'll be starting on, uh, the, the road after that. So, like, on, way they drove, the succession complete back in May, their main area, we did, last week, I mean, we've gotten the final, uh, payroll rest and the, um, clearing certificate, so that people have lost the, actually, supplement, yes, you're correct, so, like, that's sure, kind of, probably, uh, it's big. Alondale seat, we're still getting filed permits on that one. Boarding my back chamber, uh, we're going on the rear box. Uh, we still have, I don't know, sound, we're getting the same sheet that was, uh, in front of the box, to get a, a pool on that one. Uh, field, we're still, we're, we're, we're next steps. And sewer phase nine, we have, uh, we're denied a few months ago on one funding process, and we found we have all others. One of them is, we want to stay involved in fund people, same way for parking phase eight, so we're gonna be working with them over the next year to, to get a pre-application in.
All right. All right, and any questions, Dan? I have none, thank you, Dan. Attorney report, and go then.
The first thing I have on the agenda is off-road useful legislation, Act two or three. Uh, Representative, we're all here to present it down with some, some, some.
You know, that's for the ability for the state to allow both courts to, uh, to ride, and this is, uh, a lot of effort that, uh, the mayor and the attorney came, and you came as well, yeah. Tracy came as well, so he came to the Capitol two times, and, uh, basically came and happy to see that, uh, we got Jeff Landry, State Patrol, and, uh, Mr. You, Mr. Mayor.
All right.
You know, Paul, you get a picture?
Brian.
Not very well, Ken. The, Nancy. Paul.
Yeah, you're all.
From the slide.
It's not good. What, 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 what?
All right. Please sit in the back, have you?
All right, we don't sit down, we, I mean.
Come on, there's.
One other thing on the agenda, I have a rule for the next, is, um, the next step is gonna be to put down, to consider the ordinance allowing it and regulating golf courts on the shoulders. Uh, printed up, I had, there, the, on all the bridges, enough, pull the rules from Bay St. Louis, and right now, with only two, uh, places unfamiliar, they allow golf courts on the road, on the shoulders. Uh, put all those kind of rules together along with the stuff that was in the legislation, and then a draft, which will be council review. Interesting, then, if you have a discussion to start, um, with this idea of, you know, regulations, probably, please, all right.
Thank you, Brian.
Okay, clear.
Yes.
Rule number nine. Third amendment. Before we set her on, the third amendment, that was, it's, it might have to work with that.
The question, the news?
Yeah, the draft, I forget.
It's chemistry, chemistry from those two, uh.
Well, there's a lot of resident accident, who would have, you know, do something.
Civil law, like, I see that. Which is, why, right, don't worry, officially.
I know the one, we have it out, but down on the streets, it's not, uh.
Mr. Jarrett?
Also included in, uh, how about these off-road vehicles? Uh, is there something in the ordinance is now that would have given the use of these, uh, type vehicles?
A T V, that one's got one?
Yes, well, really, it's off-road.
Yeah, there's something, right?
Well, there'd be something included in Bryce, as a rider, concerning that type of vehicle.
As, as the legislation that was passed, only, uh, only authorized the town to allow golf courts and certain, what are called, low-speed vehicles. Which is a vehicle that has a max speed of, 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 point five miles an hour. So, and that's kind, that's, that's a, a term that's used in other statutes, uh, in the state, so.
I think we might get in trouble, yeah.
Might get in trouble, yeah?
Yeah, yeah. Taking into consideration the noise, sound, non-heas of, of.
Oh, that's all things, but, you know, the council, different citizens, so.
The highway?
No, the streets in Southern, and so forth. And on the shoulder, we, we, our street, we live on highway, Lord. But, uh, I'm sure the chief has had any complaints concerning this type of vehicle.
Well, that one is enough for, 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 that.
It does.
I mean, I'm, I don't bring it up, but.
Yes, sir.[1667.62]